...commercial even mentioned here today. What's the issue with?
If an individual is licensed with a real estate brokerage, there are certain requirements that he has to meet by legislation. For example, full disclosure. There has to be disclosure as to any conflicts of interest, and this is required by the Act. There has to be disclosures as to payment of commissions. If there's referrals being paid out of that commission, if somebody else is receiving remuneration for that commission, that has to be disclosed to the client. The protection of that client is that he be fully, have full knowledge of what is going on in the transaction. This is a part of the legislation, and RICA enforces this legislation. But if you run through an unlicensed individual, that person has no obligation to do that because he's got no authorization to even do the transaction.
Okay, so sorry, maybe I didn't. What I'm trying to get at here is, if I'm hearing you correctly, so Mr. Ackerman is Howler Developments?
Yes.
And Mr. Ackerman was a licensed Realtor? Again, I don't know the correct terminology, but I'm assuming was a licensed Realtor for Bankers Commercial?
I believe he was an authorized salesperson, associate, actually, associate broker for a real estate company. Had Mr. Ackerman run this transaction through Bankers Commercial, there may not be an issue here.
And right now as well, our concern is too, did he have the listing from Bankers Commercial? And that's why he went to Howler Developments so he could separate himself from Bankers Commercial? There are so many documents that should be there that do not tell the story. And again, that is something that is required by a licensed brokerage, and those documents are missing. And that has got glaring consequences.
The issue here as well is the fact that the City of Lethbridge, the City of Lethbridge's Realtor Estate Department actually paid an illegal commission. And my concern is that when the Realtor Estate Department does not know enough about the Act...
Can we focus on the issue you're bringing forward today rather than going far afield?
The issue is the payment of an illegal commission, and that that commission should be returned. And I can appreciate that the mayor finds humor in this. I don't.
I don't find humor in this. What I do find interesting is the timing of it and the fact that you bring this up well after the fact and had known exactly being the position that the city solicitor says little chance of winning civilly, no chance of winning through the Realtor Estate Act. I had posed the question to you. The only way to resolve this issue to your satisfaction is for us to hire a lawyer to file a statement claim, to go through examinations for discovery, and at the end of the day, in my opinion, undoubtedly lose at great expense to the taxpayer.
I would suggest that the city should. First of all, at this late date, this became, I became aware of this on when this notice of penalty came through. So this is not a late date. The fact that I'm not here earlier is a result of a quadruple bypass that I recently had, or else I would have been here earlier. Now, I would suggest that the city do get in touch with a lawyer who is familiar with the Realtor Estate Act and maybe get some advice based on somebody who is well-versed in the Act. I'm sorry, with all due respect, I don't believe that every lawyer knows every Act. And being a lawyer does not necessarily mean that the person understands the Realtor Estate Act.
Do you have any further questions, Deputy Mayor?
No.
Alderman Ellis?
Thank you, Your Worship. I am neither blessed nor burdened by a legal mind. However, I have my own crosses to bear, and it's an academic mind. So rather than blabber at that point, I'll try and get to the crux of the matter as I understand it. What we've heard today and what we can see in all of the documentation, Mr. Shockey, is that a transaction was entered into. A person was hired who had a Realtor Estate license. There were some administrative issues that RICA has ruled on, and they are satisfied. They are not pursuing this in any other way. We've seen the, heard from the city that it is satisfied that services were rendered, and therefore the payment was just in that sense. And you're claiming, when you go into civil court, you must claim damages. And of course, judges are not going to make rulings without some significant damages being proved. So what, how exactly in your mind was the city damaged? What are the damages?
The individual provided these services and was not authorized to provide these services.
And this led to what damages in your mind? I just want to be specific on that question.
Let's put it this way. If you were to go to an individual who was a doctor...
Well, actually, let's stick to this point. I'm asking one specific question. How is the city damaged in that it got the services that it paid for?
I believe that the city was damaged by looking...
Excuse me, I didn't ask that question, Ms. Scriber. I'm asking a question.
The city was entitled to be represented by somebody who was authorized, who had insurance, who had the onus of disclosure to make sure that, and the supervision or the ability for the Realtor Estate Council to look over this transaction.
So there were no monetary damages, no real damages that can be demonstrated? So in my opinion, this is just quite a waste of our time. So thank you, I'm done with questions.
Counselor Kaufman?
Just a question of the city manager. Howler received a check from the City of Lethbridge for $138,600 in commission?
I expect that this is the right amount?
Okay, and...
I don't have the exact amount on me.
Okay, and just in terms of time, because timing lapses, there was a resolution from council Monday, April 19, 2010. So that puts us three and a half years. Is there a limitation on these types of claims to Mr. Solicitor?
Standard limitation period is two years.
Okay, thank you.
From the time...
Okay, seeing no further questions. I have a resolution. Where is the resolution? Resolution signed. Oh, sorry. I'm just, I'm hearing all this going on between lawyers and Mr. Shockey. I guess, have you met? Have you all, have you met with the city solicitor?
No, I haven't. I have met with the city manager.
Okay, so...
Am I having a...
So from what I'm hearing is you obviously have one interpretation. And based on your experience, which I really don't know what your experience is with RICA. I mean, I...
I was a regulator.
I know you say here that you, yeah, a regulator. Well, I don't know what that is. But anyways, would it be wise that maybe you and the city solicitor meet and try and discuss this? Or is this, is this something that... Like, right now, as a member of this council, I'm hearing too many things that I, you know, I'm confused. And I'm going to be asked to raise my hand for something here, and I don't quite feel comfortable with that. So, city manager, you met, I've heard you met with Mr. Shockey. Would it be another step in possibly you and the city solicitor and Mr. Shockey meeting?
I would see no benefit in that. There's nothing more than you've heard today. That's, I've heard this information repeated when I met, and I've heard nothing new today. And I have to rely on my solicitor. I'm fortunate enough to have a mayor that's a lawyer.
I would like to make a comment here if I could, Mr. Bowen. I am concerned with, as a regulator, I am well-versed in the Realtor Estate Act. And my indications here is that Mr. Doddick and Mr. Hudson, who with all due respect are not familiar with the Realtor Estate Act. There is no charges that can be laid by this body against Realtor. Those charges are reserved for the executive director. But there is civil recourse that this city has in order to get this back. I would suggest that Mr. Doddick and Mr. Hudson might want to contact the Realtor Estate Council of Alberta, if they haven't already, and ask them what their recourse is. Because the Realtor Estate Council of Alberta will tell them what their recourse is.
Any further questions, Deputy Mayor? Yes, I do. To the city manager, just so I know in my own mind. So the City of Lethbridge paid a commission to Howler Development and, I guess, Mr. Ackerman solely? Was there any other commissions paid out or any other fees? Or, what's the word I'm looking for? Referrals paid out?
Paid to fee the $138,600.
To, to Howler.
I don't know if it was Bob Ackerman to Howler. I think it was Howler Developments. I don't have the check in front of me.
Can I just help a little bit? We were indebted to Howler Ackerman in the sum of $138,600. We deducted some interest that was owing by Howler to us at the time of payment, resulting in a net payment to Howler of $113,295. They were unrelated transactions, nothing to do with the IGA or anything else. But there was, at the time of the payment was, the check was written, there was a debt of Howler to the city that we deducted. So the net payment to Howler was $113,295.
Okay, so the check went to Howler as a commission, and that's it? No other, no other commissions paid to anybody? No referrals paid to anybody? Nothing else?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks for now. Anything further, Deputy Mayor?
No, thank you.
Okay, I have a resolution signed by Alderman Wickersham. Be it resolved that communication from Brian Shockey and Jill Scriber regarding the commission paid to Howler Developments be received as information filed. And further be resolved that Mr. Shockey and Ms. Scriber be thanked for their presentation, Alderman Wickersham.
Thank you, Your Worship. And thank you, Mr. Shockey and Ms. Scriber, for your presentation. I always believe it is a strength of democracy and leadership and government that people can come before members such as ourselves and to be able to try and get clarification or give direction to members of council in this particular case, and to get more clarification with regards to the issues. As we have heard today, this isn't just a straightforward issue that is being for this council. And as we heard under the excerpts from the Realtor Estate Act of Alberta under the offenses 81-3, there seems to be a difference with the person who is convicted of an offense under Section 17, 18, 20, 24, and 25 versus under Section 83.1 or 83.2 administrative penalties. And it seems that the Alberta Realtor Estate Council of Alberta chose to go under the administrative penalties rather than under offenses and to bring a conviction of an offense under Sections 17, 18, and 20. Under a conviction, if I have understood right, and I believe I have, that there is a obligation to return all commissions and other remunerations received by that person in respect of the activity that constituted the offense. So I believe that the Realtor Estate Council of Alberta could have chosen to go that route if they, under their assessment and appraisal of this issue, felt that there was a conviction that was warranted. However, under the notice of administrative penalty, I believe they took into consideration why, and they explained why, they went under an administrative penalty and allocated the amount of $10,000. The aggravating factors that they outlined that Howler received a remuneration for the unauthorized activity, and I believe that was one of the issues that Mr. Shockley had with regards to the city being somewhat exposed to a liability because this, in this particular case, the broker was unauthorized and so didn't have to meet the criteria of a licensed broker. And so we, Howler received remunerations for those unauthorized activities. Mr. Ackerman, director, was authorized as a Realtor Estate Broker and Associate Broker in the province of Alberta from September 1997 until September 2009 and ought to have been aware of authorization requirements. And they go on to say authorized activity has an effect on public confidence and harms the integrity of the industry. So they are definitely saying that that they were not happy with the conduct. However, they also stated that, I believe there's somewhere here. At least it is our knowledge that Howler and Mr. Ackerman has had a long history within the Realtor Estate business. And Mr. Shockley had indicated that that when this process started, that Mr. Ackerman did have a license. And that really, I believe, from what I received from our discussion here is that the process was flawed in the sense that at the time of the transaction, Mr. Ackerman or Howler was not licensed. The argument is, in my opinion, then, that should the city go after the commission in addition to the penalty that Mr. Ackerman was assessed, should we go after the commission of $113,295 or the $138,000, depending on how, if you subtract the interest that was due to the city? And again, I'm not a lawyer. I don't have that access of a lawyer background. But I do know that when you start to start a civil suit, and that's what is being suggested here, that the City of Lethbridge start a civil suit to recover, I knew, I do believe that you can burn through $113,000 pretty rapidly to make a point. Our city solicitor said that we did receive the services that we paid for, that those services were rendered, that we were satisfied with those services. His worship had indicated that the administrative penalty could be looked at as a person driving a car without a driver's license. That was disputed by Mr. Shockley. However, I believe the abilities of Howler and the abilities of Mr. Ackerman are without question. It was just, did he have the authorization to act? And the Realtor Estate Council of Alberta said, no, he did not have that authorization to act. Doesn't mean that his services were any less professional or any less, his ability was any less to carry them out. He didn't have that license, which isn't a good thing. But I believe that for this city council to take that next step and to file a civil suit isn't in the best interest of this community, isn't in the best interest of the residents of this community, and could cost us considerably more by the time you go through discoveries and a long-drawn-out process without any kind of assurance that at the end of the day, we would be successful just because of the complexity of this issue. So I support this motion, Your Worship, and I would ask other members of council to support this. And I know you've given me some callers.
There is a proposed amendment that is made after the resolutions are read. So I'm going to treat it as a separate amendment, which will have to be questioned on it and debated separately. And the resolution isn't further that. Mr. Shockey, meet with the city manager and city solicitor, discuss this matter, and come back to council by the end of September 2013 with a final report of their discussions. I have some questions of this resolution. The city manager has made it clear that any further discussions would serve little utility. As far as he's concerned, I tend to agree with him. City Solicitor, what, having what you've now heard, do you see any utility in additional meetings?
I have no interest in meeting with Mr. Shockey at all, under any circumstances.
Okay, all right. Deputy Mayor, debate on your resolution? Well, it's great to see that the city manager took his position where he doesn't want to meet with Mr. Shockey and... They have met. Well, he doesn't want to meet further. It's nice to hear that the city manager or the city solicitor just stated his position. But unfortunately, they're not the ones that put up their hand. I'm one of nine that's putting up my hand. And based on what I'm hearing, and I don't mean this, you know, I have respect for everybody in this whole discussion, but at the end of the day, I'm one of nine that's going to be putting up my hand. And so right now, I feel like telling Mr. Shockey and Ms. Scriber that we just thanked them and say we're done just doesn't quite satisfy that for me. So I'm hoping, because it seemed like there was a little bit of heated discussion going on here. There was a lot of stuff going on back and forth, a lot of discussions, a lot of comments made. Seems like, you know, there's one side that understands the Act one way and another side that understands the Act the other way. And I just don't see any reason why they wouldn't get together, understand, talk about what their side of the story is, what they believe it, what they believe in. And maybe if they're locked in a room and discuss it, I'm hoping that they could come back with some sort of a solution. So that's why I'm suggesting this. And I'm hoping council, the members of council, will see it my way. With respect to the amendment, I'm speaking against it for a number of reasons. If there was any opportunity to go after a part or any of the commission paid to Mr. Ackerman, a legitimate reason to do so, I would be the first to support that. I don't care how many times people tell me that I don't understand the Realtor Estate Act or things of that nature. The fact is, after 30 years, I have not only read legislation, ran trials, been involved in civil lawsuits, administrative tribunals, things of that nature. I know without a fact, without a doubt, that under the Realtor Estate Act, there is no chance whatsoever to collect any monies. That leaves only the civil claim. Now, the civil claim would have as part of its evidence, no doubt, the administrative tribunal's decision with respect to Mr. Ackerman's and Howler's position. They did indicate that Mr. Ackerman did have a license, or Howler had a license, Mr. Ackerman did not. I think you would find out that in a civil lawsuit, the experience of Mr. Ackerman and Howler would be pointed out. The evidence given by the city could not be any different than what was given today in that they said services were provided, that service was rendered, and that service was satisfactory to the city. So it's going to be pretty tough to convince a civil court that in fact the city suffered damages. Which brings us to that point that Alderman Ellis had indicated. Yes, it's true, you have to prove damages, and this is monetary damages. The fact that Mr. Howler or Mr. Ackerman or the combination of the two of them at the time that he received the commission did not have the piece of paper qualifying him to sell Realtor Estate and to obtain a commission does not preclude a judge from concluding that he in fact had the expertise to be able to perform the services that he did. And that is why it would be very difficult or impossible in this position to convince the two presenters today of that position. The only thing that would satisfy them is if we in fact hired an independent lawyer to issue a statement claim, and then after we've been hit with costs and everything else, say, well, I guess they were right. I am convinced that there is no hope in God's green earth of succeeding in any way in terms of recovering any portion of the monies that Ackerman and Howler received with respect to this commission. Alderman, I want to ask you.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm going to vote against the amendment for the simple fact that when I, I've read the Realtor Estate Act frontwards, backwards, all different ways. I'm not a lawyer, but I've read it. And according to Section 81, Number 3, a person who is convicted of an offense shall return all commissions. However, 83.2 says a person who pays an administrative penalty in respect of a contravention may not be charged under this Act. If you cannot be charged, you cannot be convicted. Therefore, there's no commission to return. I'm not asking a question, I'm making a statement. I'm against this amendment because I don't think there's... I'm against this amendment because I don't think any amount of meetings are going to change the facts as they stand.
Alderman Ellis?
Well, thank you, Your Worship. I too will be voting against this amendment, this resolution. I am never in favor of ordering administrators to engage in wasteful and unproductive exercises. And in my opinion, that's exactly what this would be. I've heard enough, and I'll be voting against this amendment. Thank you.
Counselor Kaufman?
Well, thank you. I don't think that this issue is done, and I think it's going to be back in some form or another over the next little while. Talking things through is always better than not talking things out. But I don't hear the city manager stating that he would benefit from this. He's my only employee, he's my only concern here at the table. And it sounds to me as if we are at a place where no action is going to occur through the administrative level. So out of respect for Mr. Shockey, Ms. Scriber at this time, and our city manager, I can't support the amendment.
Alderman Parker?
Well, thank you very much. And I've been on council for 15 years, and I don't want anyone to take this the wrong way. I don't like the way you were spoke to today. I thought people very spoke down to you, and you don't deserve that. But because you came with a concern and a complaint, and we may not agree with you, I don't think you should have been treated the way you did today. So I just want to say sorry. But I will not be supporting the amendment.
Any closing, Deputy Mayor? Yeah, I do. And I'm glad at least one member of council realized what I realized as well. You know what? I'm glad to hear that we have many of you here, sitting here, some of my colleagues. And I have tremendous respect for every one of you. That's why you're here. You were elected to do a job, and I think we all do our job as best we can. But when I hear some of my colleagues tell a citizen, and basically telling the community that you're wasting our time and that if one of us, in this case myself, I'm not sure of what's really going on here, and I'm seeking more information, a merely small suggestion of getting the two people that are apparently understand this together in a room, I don't see anything wrong with that. But we have experts here, obviously, we've heard. I'm glad to hear that we do have experts, and in certain cases, they seem to know everything about everything. We like, don't want to be involved in wasting your time or the things that we refer to as being unproductive. I agree with Alderman Parker, the way you were treated. I'm pretty embarrassed of that because I don't think a citizen should be treated that way. I'm just, I'm, actually, I'm shocked. And I'm at a loss for words right now because I believe, I think one of the previous speakers mentioned that I don't think we've seen the end of this. And all I'm suggesting is that rather than we as council wait for this to come back again, I was merely suggesting that we do what we need to do, what we're being asked to do. And obviously, we know how the vote's going to go. So I'm just, I'm shocked. I call the question. All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? That's carried. Now back to the original resolution. Alderman Wickersham, you spoke. I'll leave it open to other members of council to speak. And I'll make a comment. Both the colleagues that commented about the way the presenters were treated. Respect is a two-way street. You know, after a while, you get tired of being told you don't know what you're talking about, so you tend to react in the same way. So when someone says, with all due respect, you don't know the Act, so I will respond and say in the same way that I am treated. So to the extent that that...
So to the extent that that may have ruffled a couple of feathers of some of my council colleagues, I apologize for that. But I also feel that we've been here now for a lengthy period of time on an issue that is a non-issue, and yet some members of council, or one member of council, wants to commit taxpayer-funded administrative time to deal with an issue that if it comes back, will have to be dealt with in the same way. Or alternatively, someone's going to have to do a resolution, say, hire a lawyer, pay some money, and see who's right on this issue. Good luck on that one. So I want to make it very clear that I respond in the same manner as I am treated. Any further speakers, closing?
While, Your Worship, I'm going to respond to...
Deputy Mayor?
I know this is a resolution that just says that Mr. Shockey and Ms. Scriber be thanked for their presentation, which is really a nothing resolution, but I guess, based on my amendment that didn't go through, I'm not going to be voting in favor of this because this clearly is a resolution that just says, thank you, and we've heard you, but we're going to, you know, move on to the next thing. So I'm just, no, I better, I better just leave it at that. I won't support the resolution.
Alderman Wickersham, closing.
Well, thank you, Your Worship. Number of comments have been made here subsequent to my opening. I believe that my opening, I was clear, Mr. Shockey and Ms. Scriber, that I appreciated you coming before this body and making your case. And personally, I have met with you a couple of times, I have listened to your concerns, I have done some research and reading as a result of those concerns, and I still value your opinion, and I believe members around this table value your opinion. There may be differences and disagreements with your opinion, that's okay. I think that is all part of an exchange of information. But I trust that, that I, in meeting with you at different times, that you have felt that you were listened to, that you had respect, and the dignity that I believe that both of you deserve, and I appreciate the information that you have done, I appreciate the work and knowledge that you bring to us. However, it's okay to disagree. It's okay to, for this body, to take the information of our city manager, to take the information of our solicitor, who we pay for that information, who we rely on for good information and, and trust that information. And based on the information that I've heard today and the reading that I've heard today, I ask members of council to support this resolution. Received as information and filed isn't just a nothing resolution, in my opinion, because we have sat here this afternoon, spent considerable time, listening to the debate and listening to your concerns, and ultimately, at the end of the day, we are thanking you for that information, although we're not taking positive action on that information. So thank you very much. I'll call the question.
Person called, all those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Now, huh? Yeah, we got you opposing. Not a problem. Mrs. Hopkins, theoretically, you're supposed to be on. How long is your presentation? 10 minutes?
We need a break.
Need a break? Okay. 3:45. We'll be back. And then we have a public hearing at 4:00.